Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. For those of you at home, if you're wanting to get a hold of any of the board members, you could reach us at clerk@fulton.cny ric.org. If in the event of an emergency and we have to evacuate the building, we can go out the back door here, can go to the left or the right. We can also go out Mr. Palvino's door over here, move as far away from the building as possible. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is nobody signed up on public forum this evening. So if somebody could move 1.05, approve the agenda.
Move it.
Second. Lori and Fallon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is five zero zero. To start the evening off, I would like to welcome Desiree Trude. She is now going to be taking over for us and answering all of our questions. So welcome her forward. I want to do a quick update on our superintendent search. We will be meeting this week on Thursday at 5:00 PM here to my colleagues so that we can discuss and set up interviews for our candidates. And then we will move on and forward from there. We do have a budget workshop coming up next week. Also, it's that time of year again where the petitions for running for the board are available. So if anyone in the community or if you know anybody who's interested in running for the board next year, send them over to, we'll send them to Mrs. Trude. She will get them set up here. And I do believe that those need to be turned in with all of their information by April, is it April 30th?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It is Music in Our Schools Month, so I am looking forward to the March 11th and the 25th meeting where some of our students from the music program will be here joining us at the Board of Education. Are we meeting?
Our music, it's not February, it's February.
Yes, February.
I'm going ahead.
March 11th, the first and second March.
11th and the 25th.
I'm just so excited to get going with it.
We are celebrating the girls bowling team this evening.
See, I made mistakes.
Jumping ahead. There's been so much snow in Mr. Palvino's past week that he doesn't know what day it is.
That's right. Thank you.
We do have a couple virtual meetings coming up for our health and safety and our policy meetings. We also have our Fulton City School District Family Fun Day, which is on March 22nd. Has there been some updates? Is there anything you want to share about that?
My understanding is plans are well underway and we're looking forward to a huge crowd and sharing lots of information and opportunities for families to gather new information and have some opportunities to do some together types of activities and should be a good time.
So, thank you so much. One thing I wanted to share that is missing off of our meetings coming up, do not forget to mark the date for March 27th. That's that evening with a "I" that Oswego County School Boards and the Central New York School Boards Associations are putting on. Dr. William Daggett and Ed Feeney will be here, or it's actually in Liverpool, so we can carpool if we need to carpool.
They haven't sent out a confirmation yet.
You, I believe it was in the daily update, but you also can register off of the sheet.
Okay.
And if you registered, you should get something in your email and then we can check it from there. If you're not sure, just you can call and check and see if you're registered. But, or I can call and check. We have a meeting coming up next Monday, I believe, so I can ask. So, uh, let's see. I do want to do a quick shout out because I understand that the girls are playing in Nottingham, the girls' basketball for their sectionals. It seems like they're doing well right now, so.
21-18 at halftime. We're behind, but we're playing well.
We'll see how they do. So good luck to the girls. And tomorrow, the boys' sectionals are here being hosted at home.
That's right. Headford High School at 6:00 PM tomorrow night.
Perfect.
This was in Mr. Palvino's update, but I believe we're going to be recognizing wrestling too.
Yep.
Specifically, we have two girls going on to state and they won sectionals. I believe this is the first or third for around here.
Yeah.
But they've got a banner, they're doing great. And I just, you know, for a program that's, you know, started,
relatively young.
I think my first year, you know, they're going on to do great things. I don't want to make sure, you know, all our students are getting recognition and I think now we get to kick it off with the bowling team.
Yeah, and the boys tonight, wrestlers next time.
I do believe that Mr. Connors is stealing my thunder. Sharing that and I do appreciate that so much. So if there isn't anything further from my colleagues, we're going to go ahead and pass it on to Mr. Palvino for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Well, welcome back. It's good to have everybody back in school. And it's been an interesting winter. We sent out some information. I'll go over a little later in our presentation this evening with respect to our emergency closing plans. I think there, we'll talk a little bit about those. But we're going to start off with the most exciting part of the evening, which is recognizing our Fulton City School District Girls Bowling Team, who I enjoyed thoroughly my time that I spent with them on that Sunday. It's so much fun. I kept asking one of the dads, tell me about this part of bowling, tell me about this, what just happened? Tell me how you just figured out how many pins you think they needed to pull this up? All of that. It was a great evening, or a great morning or an afternoon that day. But Mr. Beckwith, you could come forward and recognize and share your wonderful team.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for providing us tonight. And, you know, unfortunately, some of our bowlers as well as Mr. Ells are at the girls' sectional game. You know, we know that that's definitely, they don't have to be there for sisters and cousins. So, okay, you know, we get it, we understand and we're wishing them well. I'm glad that you're providing us with some updates. That's awesome. The seven bowlers they do have though, ladies, you just want to stand up. So the seven of our 10 members right here, all right. We've got Lain Arnold, we've got Logan Arnold, Morgan Sheldon, Tara Murphy, all right, Molly Smith. And then we have two of our two seven credits right here, Kendra Phillips and Bailey LeVegue, all right. The great thing about that is all of these guys are back. And this group right here, the oldest ones, the soph- the oldest ones are sophors. So, yeah, so we're going to lose two seniors off this. But thank you. You know, I don't get to brag very often about these guys. Because we have accomplished quite a bit this year. To start off, you know, we're in the SCAC Empire Division, okay? We have, on this, it is our sixth time in a row we've been a league champions, okay? Just on a great run right now. Of these guys, we had seven bowlers that were all league, five were first team all league, two were second team all league. We had a bowler that was top in all of SCAC in average. So just doing some great things there. We repeated as class B champions. It's actually our fourth year in a row we repeated as class B champions. Recently, I was on six of those. They didn't have sectionals during COVID. So that's the ones we did go through. We didn't have that. We repeated as Division One champions, meaning we're going to New York State Division One large school team championships, which will be March 14th. So we'll be taking these guys up to that. Last year, we placed fifth. That definitely won't be the look of that this year. And then I've got seven bowlers bowling tomorrow and Friday in what they call the shootout, where they're vying for spots on a sectional team, it's a composite team they call it. So it'll be bowling out of 15th if they make that squad for another section three team looking for more state championships. So we've still got a lot, you know, going for us, still in front of us. And excited, these guys are excited, they're working hard. Still a few weeks away, but we're getting there, so. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Keep us updated on how they do in those upcoming weekends.
Extremely proud of you. It was just such a great job watching you stick together. I got a little close there and I was paying attention and you guys just fought through. And then I missed, I didn't stay for the late afternoon, which was an interesting. But I was getting, Mr. Ells was sending me at the end of each, you know, where I had this, where that. So I was listening and watching from afar as well. So just so proud of you and did a great job representing the Fulton City School District. So thank you so much. And it sounds like there's a lot of bowling in a lot of your features as well.
So, yeah.
I think it just sounds like a lot of fun.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. You're welcome to stay and enjoy some civic or you're more than welcome to go. Can't say I was civic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us, ladies and guys.
Thank you.
Great job ladies.
Good job, everybody. Thank you to our parents. Thank you for sharing your kids with us. Great job, everybody. All righty. What a great way to start off the evening, huh?
Yeah.
All right. And as we said before, we'll be seeing our, we've got a couple of our girls headed to wrestling championships later this week at the state level. I believe we have two. And then we'll be bringing, they were the section three champs, so they'll be coming. Who knows what our basketball teams will be doing? We'll have more information as we move forward. Tonight, we have the state qualifier, since we're on a sports theme here. State qualifiers are going on. That's Mr. and Mrs. Hendrickson are with their daughter, who's in five different state qualifying events this evening.
Oh, my goodness.
Along with seven other of our kids that are competing this evening. And so it's just a lot going on in the Fulton City School District. And music gets us kicked into March too. We really get rolling with some things. With the next meeting. So, great things.
I've always felt like, no, I don't think I'd want to be a kid again, but I kind of changed my mind after being on the board.
They're out there living their best lives.
They are, they are. They have so many opportunities.
Yeah. Well, that's great. We should celebrate, make sure that we celebrate them every time.
Absolutely.
Because they're great accomplishments.
And they're the reason why we're here. So we love to hear about their accomplishments.
Well, Mr. Jameson, making back in here, yeah, he was.
Do you want me to?
So why don't we get started on the January operations and finance report? I have a feeling he thought it might have been 6:30 because he and I were talking earlier and I said six, but he said 6:30. I'm wondering if he did catch. So we'll do our January operations and finance.
All right. So this is the usual report that I give the second meeting of the month. This will be a look back at January's financials. So here, I compared the revenue and the expenditures for the current year, 2425, to where we were at this time last year. And again, kind of in a similar place. I'm not spending as much time on this. I changed it up a little bit this month and probably going forward, and I'm going to spend a little bit more time looking at projections from now through the end of the year because I think that's the important part to look at at this point, which you've seen a little bit of when we're talking budget. But I still wanted to show the familiar slides that we show each month as well. The revenue breakdown, again, so far, most of our revenue has come from local sources. So tax revenue and then some other miscellaneous revenue, some tuition, some donations, things like that. Thirty-one percent has come from our state aid. You can see we still have a good portion of that that we expect for the remaining part of the year. And we're starting to get a little bit more of the federal revenue we expect and that's mainly Medicaid. And that had been placed on hold, not because of anything we did, but because of whatever issues they were encountering. But we did see a little bit more of that come in over the last month or so as well. So that's where we stand with our revenue at this point in the year. We've received about 50% of what we expect, which, you know, we're a little over halfway through the year, so.
Excuse me, Kate?
Sure.
How is, if they're going to do away with the Federal Department of Education, how will that affect funding for us, for the state and then for us?
This portion is just the general fund. So I don't know how much you would see affected in this part of our general fund budget because the federal amount is such a small amount. It's just that Medicaid that we expect to get. You know, we're yet to see, we talked a little bit about this with our auditor in terms of the special aid fund where our IDEA, so our special education grant money and Title I money that are located, it's a different fund, so you don't see that in the general fund budget. But I think that's what people are concerned about, is if any of this could affect that funding. Our auditor seems to think that it'll just, we'll still get it. It might just filter through a different location. So that made me feel good. I mean, I think it's still very much, you know, people are concerned, you know, in the climate we're in. You hear things like that and, you know.
It affects them at least $3 million, correct?
A little bit more than that. I looked at what we spend, what we put towards salaries as a district from our federal grants is 2.3 million. And then there's other expenses that we use the grant money for. So it's probably a little bit above.
And I know we don't know and we can't guess or assume at this point. But if it goes through the state, sometimes school districts aren't getting exactly what they should be getting. So is, that's my concern with the federal monies is, are we going to, you said it would filter down through possibly is what our auditor's thinking, but, you know, being a small city school district, we often see that we don't get the money.
Well, and.
That we, you know, we're going to get with that formula, so.
Those particular funding sources have, you get it for a reason. Like the consolidated grants, that's the Title I, Title II, Title IV. That has a lot to do with your poverty rate, right? So that's not going to change for us. If they continue to use that as the measure of, you know, how much of that money you would get, then that should stay stable. And, you know, I think we'll continue to hear more and I'll keep my ears peeled as I go to different business official gatherings and certainly report back too. But since that first came out and everybody kind of, I haven't heard a lot more. It's kind of quieted a little bit for now, which that could be a good sign or it could be waiting for the next shoe to drop. So, but as far as the general fund goes, I guess to answer your question, you wouldn't see a huge impact in these numbers. The expenditure breakdown, so this is where the money's flowing out. Again, you know, I think I've been drawing the attention to the benefits line as we look at it each month. That's spending down a little quicker than I'd like to see. The debt service interest is at 81%, but that's okay. We know that there's a finite amount. We're not going to go over that. We know what we're going to owe in interest. So it's just the timing of when that comes. So that's not one that I'm concerned about. But you'll see in the next couple of slides why I say I feel like we're, the benefits are spending quicker than I would like them to. So the budget projections, I did two slides for this. So when I run a budget status for January 31st, it shows me where we are right now, what we've spent year to date, what we have still encumbered, meaning what's spoken for, what we think we're, we know we're still going to spend. And then it gives me an available balance. However, if you're looking towards the end of the year, that available balance is a little bit deceiving. So when you look at this slide, you kind of think, oh, well, we still have 11.2 million dollars. We're in great shape. And that alone, yes, we are. I mean, you see that one line, the employee benefits is overspent. But what that doesn't show you are lines that I already know we're going to spend. So on the next slide, I took out some of the lines that are currently showing we have 11.2 million in a balance. So I, I know we're going to spend the rest of our non-instructional salaries. I know we're going to try to spend our state aid money because that's one, those are budget lines we actually want to spend because that drives our aid for the upcoming year. I know we're going to spend our BOSI's budget. I know we're going to spend our debt service and our interest. And I know we're going to make that transfer to the special aid fund because that's our portion of the ESY program. So really, assuming that we don't spend, overspend anywhere else or spend anything in those lines where we have a little bit of an excess, that only leaves us with a half a million to play with. So that's really not, when I show you just the one month in isolation, it doesn't really tell the story that I think we're seeing as you project out to the end of the year. So just for full transparency, I kind of wanted to revise the projections to a more realistic projection. And, you know, that'll continue to get more real, I think, as we get towards the end of the year because we do have that hole in the employee benefits line.
And that employee benefits in that line specifically, is there an area within that benefit line?
Yes, thank you. So that line encompasses all employee benefits, but the area of concern is healthcare as we've been talking about. You know, we're not, we're not concerned with teachers' retirement or employees' retirement or even really vision in dental. It's the medical portion of healthcare that is the area of concern.
Excuse me, Kate?
Sure.
Is the half a million, is that down from the 2 million we're looking at? Or is that something that'll probably be projected to be a part of that 2 million?
So, what I was showing, Tim, is the half a million is if we spend what I know we're going to spend and we don't overspend anywhere else, which is unlikely, we would have a half a million dollars left at the end of the budget season. Because when I show everybody just where we are currently, it kind of gives us a picture of, oh, we have like 11 million dollars left. But we really don't because I know we're going to spend a lot of that. So the 2 million, that's just one line. But because we have a surplus in some other lines, it kind of looks like we can cover it. But as you get, as you progress through the months, you know, those lines where it looks like you can cover it, they dwindle and you don't have as much excess to help fill those holes that you have when you have a big gap like that, 2 million. So I guess I'm preparing you for the possibility of a deficit when we get to June. And, you know, that was part of the reason we brought our auditor in early to help us work through, you know, what that looks like. And that's why we're spending so much time on the budget for next year. Not that we don't, we always spend a lot of time on it, but, you know, spending a lot of time brainstorming, especially the healthcare line, making sure that we're in a place where we don't see that red number again next year because, you know, we want to make sure we stay in a healthy position in the budget.
On a percentage basis, where would you estimate our healthcare is running at? Fifteen, 20%?
For next year?
Over, well, right now?
Oh, right now? Want me to do some math? Want me to do some math?
No, I thought you'd give my head.
Not off the top of my head, hang on.
Sorry?
You should be.
I shouldn't be doing that. I think it quantifies it nicely, that's why. I think it gives you an idea. You hear six percent, eight percent, but in the private industry and often in the public, public sector, I'm hearing numbers in the fifteen to twenty percent raise on average.
Eleven to twenty is about the average.
And I think that's important for people to know. And that's compounding year after year for us. Correct.
So you want to know, like, what I think we're over so far this year or what we're going to be over?
Well, just if we're running out, just a estimate, just a projection.
I think about twenty percent.
Yeah, of where we had budgeted and anticipated, based on our trends over time. We had been relatively flat nicely for seven to eight years and previous to that with our healthcare. But I think, you know, being an individualized provider, a self-insurer, I think they're having more challenges now than ever before, I think, especially groupings with that. But I think that's an important piece that kind of quantifies it for people. So thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay, it's all right. Are there any other questions about this? And I'm sorry, Tim, if that wasn't a very clear answer.
No, that's fine. You do, I mean, honestly, Kate, you do a great job explaining this all and between all the meetings, you know. It's building on everything we've had, so I have a good idea of where everything is, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Do you want me to give my quick question?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and just do your budget and?
Sure. I don't have slides for the budget update, because we do have the budget workshop next week. The one thing, well, I shouldn't say I don't have slides. They're not new slides. I was just going to show you, I do have to submit this week just our, our tax cap, oops, sorry, our tax cap formula to the comptroller. And all that means is I have to put this information into the comptroller's website. And what they're really interested in is these numbers, you know, the two-point-one-five percent. And they want to know that you're, are you going to try to go over your maximum levy where you would need a supermajority? And we know we're not going to do that. So I will put that information in. You can go in and revise it. So, you know, based on what we end up deciding for the tax levy, you know, our maximum is the twenty-three-point-one million. If we don't go out at that, I can go in and revise to what our actual number is. And that's a common thing to do. But they want it in by March first, so I, I'm a rule follower. I want to have it in by the deadline, so I will do that this week. And, you know, in terms of topics for the fourth, you know, I think the tax levy definitely is one to talk about. I have some updates for you on the use of reserves, you know, what we can plan on using this year to fill the gaps we're going to have and then next year to help build the budget. We can discuss some scenarios. We have several scenarios for reducing expenses. And then I thought we could discuss a little bit, and I know you know this and we've discussed it before, but just again, what does a contingency budget look like and what does that mean? Because I think that's important, that we communicate that clearly with the community as well. And then any topics that you may think of. Sounds great, all right. That's all I have. I'll get Mr. James's.
Thank you, Kate. As Kate indicated, at our next, our meeting next Tuesday, six P M., I believe, right? Is that correct? We will go over just some certain things that we've been working on. Kate will provide you updates, really trying to generate that conversation, because as we go into March, March is really the month where we really need to, to get things out focused and, and really set the direction of where we're going to go, so that when we go into April, we're refining and defining. And then by mid-April, that second meeting in April, locking in a budget and then starting that process of really getting it out to the community and telling the story and what we're trying to accomplish with this budget in the best interest of all of our kids. Thank you. Next item is our capital project update from King K. Mr. James?
You know, I thought it was about ten minutes early.
All right, Mike, I always have to follow a really good presentation, so I got to go first.
Still had to follow the bowler's.
I did, I had to follow the bowlers. That was a tough thing.
So I started in tonight just to cover some updates on the twenty-twenty-three capital improvement project. I only have four or five images, but there's quite a bit to talk about. So, project timeline, I'd like to go over each phase a little bit. I know we've reviewed the scope, which is for everyone's, just a little refresher of what we're doing on each phase. I have some notes about what the major scope is in each phase. So Phase One is the G-Way-Bardley High School and then Fairgrave scope. That G-Way-Bardley is the remaining work at the high school gymnasium. And you've done some work there recently. What's remaining is some more painting and the flooring, speakers, some doors. And then at Fairgrave, the scope in Phase One are the window balance replacement. So all the hardware that lifts and closes the windows will be updated. We're receiving some medals on that. And so that's underway, the startup with the Chase. So we're making progress there. Phase Two is at the high school, Fairgrave and the Granby School. So at the high school, it's site work, parking. At Granby, that's extensive site work that we've bid and tried to do a few times now. Phase Two is also all the toilet room work at the high school and at Fairgrave, so that's a substantial amount of work. Also at the high school, the auditorium improvements, sound and lighting, and the secure entrance. That is, has received S E D approval, which is great news, back on February fourth. And we're working with the Chase toward a bid. The other factor in Phase Two are some revisions the district tried, decided to make to the scope, including some boiler replacement in Granby. And I'll talk a little bit about that more in a moment. But the team is currently incorporating that boiler into our set before we go out to bid. Listen. Phase Three, we have received S E D comments. That's then into the state. The district paid a bit of a premium to go into what's called a third-party review. That worked out very well for us, because we received comments from the engineers and architects right away. And we're working on an addendum. So whenever they have questions, we have to respond to them in form of an addendum. So the team's working on that. The Phase Three scope is at, again, the high school, the athletic complex, which is where all the site improvements and drainage at the fields will occur. Some scope at the junior high and the ed center. So I'll just touch on those for a moment. The athletic fields I mentioned, that's the dugouts, the fencing, some pavement, the drainage of the fields. So that's quite a bit of work that's just been reviewed. At the ed center, it's not an awful lot of scope, but it is exterior masonry improvements. There's a lot of brick masonry that's in need of repointing here. You may notice on your way in, there's some of the original cast stone where the joints are open completely. So we want to make those corrections now. It's not the entire building, it's not all of the masonry. It's what we felt were the highest priorities. So that's part of the scope. And please feel free to stop me at any point here. At the junior high, we are updating the elevator to meet code and some accessibility issues. There's some more site pavement. The district's invested heavily in site improvements at high school, but there's a bit more. And, I'm sorry, at the junior high, and security at the main entrance. You may remember those images where we're, we're expanding the security entrance and moving the interior vestibule door back a bit, so that the security windows falls within the vestibule. So that's part of the Phase Three scope. The other item that is included in Phase Three and actually went to S E D, our window, the window replacement at the junior high school. And that's the other item I want to talk about tonight. You may know a little bit about this already, but I have some photos I'd like to share. But before we do that, on Phase Four, the last phase, which is Lanigan and Balder, we are working on those documents right now and we hope to submit those later in March for approval. At Volne, the scope is playground improvements, abatement of the cafeteria floor and replacement with new floor finishes. There's some, some small toilet rooms back in at the BOSI's area, where the walls have been damaged a little bit. We're going to address those. And some exhaust fans and electric panels. At Lanigan, at the south end of the front classroom ring, there are a few rooms, actually seven rooms, where we're replacing the univentilators. One for one replacement and addressing some, some exhaust issues. Also at Lanigan, kitchen hood, boiler feed tank and some plumbing fixtures that we're addressing itself. I just thought for history's sake, we might run through that. So if there's any questions about the scope, I mean, if not, I think we'll go on to the next slide, which, the background of this slide doesn't seem to be coming through, but I described.
Actually, yeah. Let me try, do you want me to try? Let me try what was here.
And I can certainly talk about it.
Well, I'll do some quick questions while I'm working on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So out of the different phases, which ones are we still working to get through S E D with paperwork-wise? Like are the first and second through all at this point or?
They are. It's really the third phase where we owe them an addendum. That's really at the tail end before we receive approval. And then Phase Four, the Lanigan and Balder phase, that will be submitted to them in March. And their review times have really come down, partly because of the third-party review process. So it's all lining up pretty well.
And how is getting materials right now? I mean, is that effective, like in the, I don't know, the change, not the change, I always say the supply change or prices or anything, has anything shifted around?
I'm not seeing any very serious issues. I think in the recent past, the problems have been with mechanical equipment. But that even has been resolved a little bit. I think coming out of COVID, everyone is trying to do mechanical work.
Great, great.
Both in Central School District as well. And, you know, we wrestled with that, but we're able to obtain anything.
And I think we talked about before for the last thing, what were the projected? Because I know we needed time for doing the drainage and also the floor for the G R B gym. I knew we talked about times, I just wanted a refresher.
Yes, and that, that work has been bid. Pack construction is our low barrier. And the Chase has developed a schedule that's been shared that most of that will happen over the summer. These involves refinishing of the gym floor, which we'll have to take over this week.
Gym floor painting. Go ahead, Tim.
No, that's fine, that's just what I wanted to figure out, Brian, I'm good.
Yep, and the gym, yeah, this summer is the G R B floor painting. Everything is going to be, it'll be amazing, like it's done hopefully by the early August is the goal.
I'm sure I know, we're working on the new Red Dragon logo at either one or both ends of the gym.
So it's going to be pretty drastic. And then the drainage due this summer?
That's why I was, I thought, I wanted to separate the, for Tim. That's why I was, so yeah, can you explain the drainage part? What we're looking at, that's a thirteen-month.
Yeah, the drainage at the athletic field is actually part of Phase Three.
Oh, okay.
So, and that, again, we're working with the Chase, we had a meeting in this room a few weeks ago about ordering all of this work. Because we're in multiple buildings and, and working with Nate and Chris about when we can add those fields and how long we have to be off the field. So I think that's still going to be a mess a little bit, Tim, but we're having those discussions.
And we're trying to time it so we can get on the field as quickly as possible at both ends. Because it has to set a while after they put everything in and it's set. I call it set.
Yeah, or you're going to disturb a lot of topsoil and everything has to be grown. And then the roots have to set before we're really going to play. So Kate managed to revise the, thank you.
It's a whole lot different.
So it's really, it's an image of the boiler room. And there are, there's the image on the left side, which shows the demolition. There are three boilers currently at Granby. Only one is working reliably, and that's Boiler B three, one that's gray. Last year, I can't tell you exactly at what point, but you had some severe problems with one and two. Boilers one and two are both, date back to nineteen ninety-one. And Cory and his team have had contractors here trying to nurse Boiler one along with mixed results. What we decided to do was, because that's such a high priority, you do not want to run a facility on a single boiler, is that we included boiler replacement in the current Phase Two at Granby. So that's the job that we're going out to bid fairly soon. It'd been nice if these issues developed a month or two later, when you weren't so concerned about cold weather. It's not the only, the only building in the state running on one boiler right now. But we will definitely replace the second, which is what you see on the right side of the image. The green boiler will be replaced. And the third boiler will just leave that pad empty. We're actually going to demolish that boiler and leave the pad and the connections for in the future we can come back. And that would be the easiest place to add the third boiler when the time comes. We believe the building originally had three boilers, because they used one to heat the pool. Now you have separate, smaller boilers to heat the pool. So we may very well be able to function with just, just the two. So Boiler three, for what it's worth, is, takes back to two thousand and eleven. So it's, it's the newer of the three.
And that's the one still working, right?
That's. So I'd say the primary purpose for me being here tonight is to talk to you about what we've discovered at the junior high school windows and the wall construction. And some of you may be familiar enough, when this building was originally constructed, there were some serious concerns with how it was built. And since then, the district has spent money, I think, a year or two after it was constructed, to make repairs to the exterior veneer. And you'll see on the image on the left, that's the original facade in nineteen eighty-four, that it's aluminum framing and insulated panels, all of that black material. You'll see on the right, which is a current photo, that material was removed and the building was reskinned with brick. Our scope in Phase Three was to replace the windows. And the more investigation that we did, the more concerned us. I've shared with the administration and the maintenance staff, the windows that are there currently, I'm not a fan of how they operate, not a fan of how they were detailed. But I don't believe that's the cause of the moisture issues that we've seen on the inside of the building. You may recall, there's those tools that have broken down, either wood. There's signs of drywall or wallboard around the perimeter of the openings, where there's, where there's evidence of moisture making its way into the interior of the building. And that's not everywhere, but it's often enough that we wanted to do some further investigation. So as I mentioned, the second, like the S E D, included all of that scope. And we will, we've received a review and approval of that. But in the fall of last year, really the summer of last year, the district engaged with Ari Kelly, who's a masonry restoration specialist contractor. And we had them come in, and you may have noticed this, they opened a few holes, a couple of holes in that facade. And you see in the image over on the left, you see a little dots as location A. And down below, there's a plan. So that's on the second floor in one of the classrooms. The image on the right of the existing facade, there's little, two black dots on the far end of the photo, because the locations were outside of our image. But they were over the faculty room, which is right near the main office. So they opened up the brick. And I was driving through Fulton on my way one morning, the mason called me and said, you might want to come back and look at this for yourself. So I did that, and we have a couple of images there I can share with you. So I did that, and we have a couple of images there I can share with you. This is my last, my last slide. The two images on the right are of the opening once the brick was removed near the faculty room. The image on the left is on the classroom wing. And as we suspected, the issue with the moisture finding its way into the building is because the windows weren't flashed properly. And without getting into a lot of building science, on the far right, the black material that you see and at the brick should really have what's called an end dam on it. So any moisture that's driven into the masonry from rain works its way down the building sheathing and is directed out at the bottom of the brick. Unfortunately, the image in the middle, you'll see it's insulation with like a gray or silver film on it. Behind that is just metal stud and insulation. So I have other photos, but I reached my hand through, once we removed that insulation, and I could tap on the wallboard on the inside of the building. What that means is there's no real air barrier. There's no water or vapor barrier on much of that building. And for King and King, where we're tasked with installing the windows, we really have nothing to flash to. So it became apparent to us, and we shared with Brian and his team, that we don't think we should proceed with those windows right now. They have a larger issue. Before I end on that, I'll point out that the image on the left, we see dupont. That's a typical house wrap you'd see on a residential building. So when they removed the curtain wall, as you saw earlier, they did go in and they put some wallboard and they put some house wrap. But we are concerned they still didn't flash properly. So what we'd like to propose to the district is to hold off on the window work. We'd like to, in Phase Three, include in the scope for the contractor to do more investigation around the building. We would never make a recommendation with just two openings, we need more information. In some ways, it's worked out, because we need additional funds to support the boiler replacement at Granby, which I think is a bigger issue. The walls have been this way for a long time. Yes, we have some moisture drive in the building, we probably have some vapor drive out of the building that we need to address. The windows will work, they'll continue to work. It's not a safety issue, but we'd like to get our arms around how big of a problem that is. And as we finish up Faces One through Four, use those funds to address the district's highest priorities. And Brian, I'd love to open it up to you.
Yeah, I think the timing, everything works out for a reason, I guess. And as we found that, we've had window problems. Since I arrived here, I heard about the junior high and the window issues specifically. And we've been trying to get at it for a number of years. This was the first time we've actually really defined, at least initially, what the issues are. At the same time, Boiler at Granby went in and started having significant issues. So the timing is, worked out well for us to get that boiler replaced at Granby. And, because you never, we found, because Boiler one, one day, was not running one morning, you know? So again, you don't ever want to have just one boiler in any of these schools. So this is working out, I think. And then, as we've talked about before, with the 10% debt limit changing, and I think there's gonna be some opportunity in the near future for Fulton, and hopefully in the next project after this one, to really tackle some of these larger projects and give you the flexibility to meet some prioritized needs. And I think at that point in time, we'll be able to really get at the junior high. And sadly, since 1984, that's a lot of years, 16 and 25 is like 41 years, that here we are, still dealing with some of those same issues down the road. And, you know, my guess is there's mold issues and some other kinds of issues that go along with all these things. So we wanted, that would be in the next project. We need to be poised, when you put your next project out, that this is one of your priorities and we do it right and correctly, so it's ready for the next 40 years.
And it's so long ago, there's not a lot of history of what happened at that time. We did, with the district's permission, we reached out to Joe Menard, who was a
He was on staff at the time.
On staff, yeah, he had some history of what happened and most of what was occurring, like it was the lower wing of the classrooms. And even Eric Poproski, who was a teacher at the time, was familiar. But with not enough detail for us to make decisions based on, so I think.
Eric was here when they put the facade on, and Joe was here a little bit before that. So we were able to get, we're just trying to get the story. Like, tell us when you were here, what did you see, what did you experience? Trying to give us some ideas of directions to take. So, and that resulted in kind of in our move into the building this way and really digging and failing. It's scary to feel that you can take where that silver is there, reach right into the wall, that there's nothing there keeping your hand from getting there. That means everything else can get there as well.
Commercial buildings are not constructed like that.
What's the worst-case scenario?
Worst case, I would say the veneer would come off.
The whole, the whole building?
If the investigative work shows us that there's no wallboard and no sections would get salvaged? Yes. And then what's done now is a water vapor barrier. You're pretty much wrecked the building, and you see it, even residential construction.
Yeah.
You're moving that, different times. Now, Matt from the Chase couldn't be here this evening. And I know we have a meeting in the morning to talk about the phasing and our budgets. And just the nature of projects, when you have multiple phases, when you get to last phase, things kind of get squeezed. So we'll have to make some decisions as we bid these next two phases. And Phase Four is at SED, we might have to build in some alternates, just to make sure we can protect as much sculpt as we can. But we're working on that as well. That was a lot, so.
Oh, it's a, I don't, I don't know if this is true, but this is what I've heard for decades throughout the thing. Isn't Virginia High built like on some swamp land and it's has issues with, there used to be like a smell that must be there.
All I've been told, and I forget who told me the story, but it was in Apple Orchard's that were there, and I'm not sure. And it was lowlands in there, there's some wetness, I think they had to put some fill in and things like that, from my understanding.
Was it watershed from Lake Yamwan?
Then I'd, I'd gotta think who told me the story, somebody had some of the background. It was probably Robin.
So was that the code, was that up to code at the time it was built, or did somebody?
Messed up. Yeah.
Compromised it.
In 84, I can't, I can't say. I'd say if there were soil issues at the junior high, we'd see it in movement and cracking. I think this was just improper construction. We wouldn't be having this conversation.
My understanding was a southern design. Is in that built, is schools more south of, you know, of our climate, where we see this kind of change and this kind of weather? Is some, one of my understandings is some of their work was more southern in design than it was for northern environments, which explains why we started having some issues early on.
So you're saying that we have time to decide what we have to do with this, but where does that put us at the safety of our staff and our students?
Yeah, I don't think anything that I've shown you tonight in terms of the share well is a safety concern.
Okay.
We have the opportunity to do the investigation.
Project manager. We have to look back, we have all the records on the basement. Yeah, I'm not sure who it was. It wasn't, wasn't the Chase and it was King at the time, so.
So do we know if there's like a huge mold? I know we've had issues with mold that you, we have been
I brought that up because I just, with water, exactly.
I mean, I know that it's been told we've been taking, it's been taken care of, but that's just something that I know sometimes can cause issues for our
Which is why I'd like to see in the next project. I wouldn't want to get too much further down the road with this. Because as I said, we've replaced windows in that wing, we've done other kinds of things, because we thought it was a window problem.
Right.
But what we've, we found out in the center around the courtyard, we changed all the flashing. All that was done in a project soon after I arrived here, they were working on it. Yep, and so that was a flashing problem there. So it's kind of been consistent as we work our way out, that it's, we thought it was the southern exposed windows catching all the weather coming in, you know, those, that's where we're getting the leaks on those weather, on those windows and certain things in certain classrooms. But what it's really seeming to be, after we've dug in literally more, it seems to be related to the issues around flashing and and installation that probably wasn't appropriate for our climate.
You wouldn't think that water will work its way through a drip veneer, but it does, especially in a hard driven rain. And then the sun will come out and heat up the brick. That moisture wants to escape. Ideally, it goes through the brick, down the moisture barrier and out. But your moisture barrier is compromised. There's also moisture in the building trying to get out. So there's a number of things we have to consider.
But those of you that are on the board, or all of you that are here, eight eyes, you're all here 10 years from now, eight years from now, this is gonna be one of your projects in probably four years, three or four years, you have to win the priorities. Hopefully sooner than that, we can get the debt limit where you need to pay.
I was gonna say.
Hopefully, fingers crossed, 27 is the original goal.
I'd like to know who the project manager was, and I would like to know what the code was back there and whether or not
You were.
we were stiffed somehow. And is there a, is there a statute of limitation on somebody's screwing it?
I ask that same question all the time, too.
Code right now requires a continuous exterior insulation. In theory, that silver insulation, if it runs everywhere, is continuous, but that's not why they used it. They just had brick, the metal stud, in bad insulation. And I imagine that was common practice back in the mid-eighties. Now, we, King and King, not to drag this out, King and King walked into every one of those spaces that was receiving new windows. So we were in looking, and the moisture issues were in a handful of those. It's not, you haven't mentioned any health concerns. So I would say it's marginally, the water's finding its way out. There are a few rooms where it might get hung up on the lid, that's why the paint was failing. It's bigger than a window show, in fact.
Well, thank you for that.
But the positive is, we were able to move on to a project that has a significant priority. When it comes to heat, you have to have heat. And so, so in a way, it worked out to a certain extent. And had we started that window installation without knowing what we don't know now, that would have just been masking a problem that we had again. That would have just been a gift to keep on giving.
That would be much more comfortable standing here than I am right now.
So was this something that you recommended, took the territory out and see what was behind it? Or was it just something we fell into?
No, after investigating the windows, even though some of the windows have seal issues and some water penetration, King did not feel like the real problem was related to the windows. It had to be flashing. So, and it took this contractor months longer than we had liked to open up this, and then we, it was confirmed on the flashing.
Appreciate that, King and King, as we were asking questions and really talking about those windows constantly, we're like, then they had this thing, like, we need to look into this, let's look here first. And lo and behold, we found the real root of the issue that's been going on for decades.
You'll be, you'll be our reference, I think.
Any other questions for Mike?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And the last item this evening, just
Sure, please, go ahead. Last faces, I was included on your Friday meetings. Are you included being on the meeting like tomorrow?
You still get invited?
Tomorrow?
No, I'm not getting invited, I'm not getting invited anymore.
We're, 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 we're gonna have a meeting just once a month on a Friday. So the next one will be the first Friday in March, so I can make sure you're on that one. Tomorrow, we're talking about, I can send you that invite if you'd like. We're talking about, we had some funds left over from the 2019 project, and if there are any options to utilize those funds on the 2023 project. But I can send you that invite.
Yeah, if you would.
Yep.
I'll just be silent, just listen.
No, me too, probably.
No, you shouldn't have dropped off. I think we switched project man, remember, we had some movement, maybe that's where it got
Yep.
lost in the, because we, I think I got dropped off at one point.
Oh, yeah. And thank you for sitting in on those meetings, Nick.
Oh, of course.
It allows you to have somebody on the board to give a history down the road, you know, even if, you know, just to say, you know, as part of those discussions, and then he taps you on the shoulder and, you know, it's really helpful. So, thank you. Final item is our emergency closing plan update. Those of you, I think we sent it to the board as well today. We did a survey before the break with our families. We took that information and we made adjustments in our learning plan. We had, you know, there was a more of a generic plan, you know, that was out there for remote learning that you just basically carried over from when we were remote before. Hadn't really looked at it and designed a plan that was specific to emergency closing for days, like a day at a time, very different than closing for long periods of time. So what you have, what we sent out today, I shared with you at your desk, the letter that went out, you also received that via email today, that went out this morning. And it talks about, just, it thanked our families and parents for their input through the process, that we put together a schedule based on, it was really invaluable, we made some adjustments, including packets being available for families that can't maybe have access, or their kids go to a daycare provider that may not have access, or there may be multiple kids where they feel like that environment going online is really not gonna work for them. So that was one of those pieces that we really appreciate, there was a lot of it. I mean, ultimately, this is a plan we hope we never use. I mean, I want to start the thought by saying, it's a plan I hope we never have to use. But we want it to be prepared, and that's, that second paragraph talks about that. That we also wanted to make it meaningful and purposeful. And so I think we really took those 360 responses and incorporated it into something that would work. So what you have is the letter, and then we also provided what we call the family remote learning updates. And that was a document that went out, it's also on our website. It's not at forefront where I'd like it to be, so I sent an email to our PR person from Bosse's to make sure that gets on there, because it's on a page, it has its own page on our website now. But this is our family learning updates, it includes our communications around district communication, teacher communications, student and family support. It talks about instructional delivery, synchronous versus asynchronous, and what's the difference? What would be happening? We're gonna provide, we call them remote paper learning materials, which is, we didn't want to use the term packets, so we're using remote paper learning materials is the term that we use. And that's when back, it's the backup if learning is not accessible through the remote. Instructional activities will include live check-ins, small group instruction, independent learning, all aligned with regular coursework. Whenever possible, instruction will prioritize reinforcing prior learning and skill building activities. But there's also courses that will, you know, moving forward, that they can continue to move forward as well. So those are the kinds of things we would do. We provided the draft schedules on the sheet. You'll see that there's the secondary schedule, 7th to 12th. It'll follow a modified schedule with start time at 9:30, so it's a two-hour delay schedule that allows families to get settled in and staff to get ready and focused. And then the elementary starting will be 10:30. You'll see the schedules there, the time schedules are below as well. So our families can see how that would operate. We will be taking staff, or student attendance and engagement, is at the bottom of the page at the document. The document also talks about student expectations for remote learning. We're also doing this for staff. The staff's not listed, but we also have expectations for staff when they're engaged in remote learning, because we learned a lot about remote learning. And we learned, you know, some things you don't realize are happening in your home around you. Things, you know, just you want to make sure everybody remembers some of those things that we learned. So that's going out as well to our staff. Technology and resources, we talked about device. So what we're gonna be doing, and it's something we're gonna try out, Chromebooks will be sent home with all students when remote learning is a next-day possibility. So we're looking at the weather three and five days ahead of time, so we can really try to get, and we're really working closely with our meteorologist to say, listen, you know, if you got something coming, let us know. We will be very conservative, so if they project like freezing rain, you know, three days from now, we'll prepare, making sure that that day before that they go home. Some of the feedback was for the littles, especially, meaning our K1, 2, 3s. They, a lot of parents felt like taking them back and forth in the book bags was, you know, a challenge for them to carry them, and this and that, and all of those things. So we're going with this approach. Districts are doing it differently, some are sending them home every single day. Other districts are sending it home, or sending them home when they anticipate the weather. The biggest challenge with that is, you know, if you have a water main break, for example, and it closes, you know, there's a situation at one school, you don't have them home. So there's the, that's that one time. We do have that one day in the bag, June 30th. If we had to do something like that, we could, obviously April break is also there. Hopefully, we don't have anything like that, that happens, and we do have that one day, you know, to play with if necessary. So again, what else is on here? Talks about students sign in, there'll be some tips for parents and families that go home as resources, you know, to log in. Their question came up, can families use their own? Yes, they can log in, their kids can log in, using their devices at home. their devices at home if they have a home computers, things like that. They can log in using their um ID, their um Fulton City School District login. It brings you through, puts us on our GoGuardian, you know, and all of that. So that is, that was a question that had been out there. So that is an opportunity. Um.
Could we have parents opt out of if they don't want their kids to bring their, their Chromebook?
We hadn't really discussed that part as of yet. We're trying to get just some uniformity right now. They could just leave it. I mean, just not use it and log in. It would be hard, I think, to know if, if one child and this and that. I think we need to see. Hopefully, we won't have to see. But if we did, let's try. We plan on doing um surveys after if, if we had to do this. We would do a survey to families, what worked well, what didn't work well. And that may be one of those feedbacks that comes. Uh is there a way we could figure out that we wouldn't have to send them home, which would actually be a good thing, you know, one less that we had to send out. Um but making sure that we had a system for that, making sure that everybody had that.
Now, since there's five um snow days incorporated into the schedule, does that mean after those snow days are used, they're used already, then if you have more, then we'll go to remote?
So actually, we got creative. We, we used our five. And then we um, we moved the June twenty-seventh super, I always put a super tense conference day on the last day of school, so we only had three the rest of the year. Um because of this very kind of situation, it was the one, what we did was we moved that day to Valentine's Day, the fourteenth, which we ended up having a, a snow day.
Like an inter.
And that became our sixth day, right? So that was our sixth day. And now the state said poss, and June thirtieth, we had, that's a possibility. Um yeah, I think there's more discussion we need to have as a board. I mean, right now, our calendar, which for some reason is right here.
Yep.
Um but at the bottom of our calendar, we had that statement, the event, we always use the two, you know, working backwards, February and April dates. Um but I think, you know, with the movement that happened this year in other school districts around the area, we went and were consistent with the others. We knew that we would have attendance issues with families and, and our staff, probably both, on either one of the breaks. The February break was too close to when we had our five. There's a rule of thumb set somewhere, which I know I've seen since I came to Fulton, but can't find it. Generally, it's two weeks ahead of time if you were gonna notify families if you're gonna take February break days. Um April was still there. We made the decision to put the plan together. Uh they did a fantastic job. I, I need to give accolades to our staff. They did an outstanding job on the fourteenth uh working on this. We then uh went through it uh last week during the break as an administrative team. Most of the team was here. We went through that um with our entire team, getting feedback, tweaking it, some language kinds of things, taking the feedback, and then we rolled it out um this morning to our families and to our staff. The staff also got the same documents that you had this evening. The staff knows exactly what went out um to them as well.
So I assume, because you, there's been at least three districts in our um county that's had to use the virtual remote days for their students. Have you had positive feedback from those superintendents?
So I had, I, I've not had a, a conversation with uh your superintendent uh at your district. I know that they, she commented today, because I talked with her about something else, that they were on remote learning yesterday and today at, at the academy.
At the high school.
Um and um I did have a great conversation with a Swego superintendent because he was the first one that actually ran out of days. Uh because he had a school that had a water main, something kind of break that happened up there. So he ended up actually getting off, even those buildings are off a little bit by a day. So they had gone to remote the first time. So he had one school that he had rolled forward with a, with a remote day. The feedback that he got was extremely positive through the surveys that they did. Um he will share those surveys with us that, so we can replicate some of those questions uh as well. And uh we will do the same thing. Uh we will send out after, hopefully never have to do that survey. But if we have to do a remote learning day, we'll do the similar surveys and get that permit, that feedback and then make immediate adjustments if there's areas that we can make immediate adjustments in. I think it's, you know, I, I think it's a strong, it's a good plan. Um, you know, and I think it's, it's something that we hope we never have to do. But I think um as Fulton does, I think we spent a lot of time and effort putting this together. The resources that have been put together for teachers, um I wish Ms. Hendrickson and Mr. Hendrickson were here. They have put together a plethora of resources and other things for teachers um as well. And that was feedback that teachers were looking for a, as well. So those resources were pulled together for them as well. So we've really gotten that, that was from the fourteenth feedback from teachers. So Renee and Jeff, they, they pulled that together and put um, got feedback from the coaches, and they pulled those things together, and they're rolling those packets out and getting them ready for the types of materials that we, that teachers will need um in the event of this type of situation.
And, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, so speaking of that, I, not to be a Debbie Downer, but I just want to toss this out there. I would encourage the district to consider for that June twenty-seventh date, possibly an asynchronous learning date. I think we're going to run into big issues at the high school. We have students who haven't been there since the first week of June and then to come back in the last, the twenty-seventh. I think, I think we're gonna have issues and I think.
I believe it's still a regents rating day, the twenty-seventh. So I think we're okay with that. I will confirm it.
It, it just says honor thing, last day for students on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, the rating day, it's, the rating day is right there. I will check with the state of New York to make sure bringing the high school kids back would be.
Well, even, even the high school, I've even heard a lot of flack from parents of littles, how difficult it is getting them in that last week of June and parents of the little thing. I'm not sending them in. I'm just saying, if it's possible to do an asynchronous day, that's something we may want to consider. I think attendance is really gonna come back. Plus, we are unsure of the heat index.
How do we get our Chromebooks back?
Well, that would be the issue.
Well, that's why I said asynchronous, without.
The law, the law says, my understanding from Chris, I know Chris Todd shared this information with the superintendents, for a day to count, it needs to be at least, I'm using the word sixty percent synchronous. It has to be more than half, but I don't like, half is, seems too close to not making it. So I, I, let's say sixty percent of the time needs to be synchronous or it doesn't count as.
Or maybe that poll of who has stuff that you can, they.
Well, I think, if we really think about the type of days that we do and the activities that they do, but I will check on the high school.
Yeah, I just think that we're gonna run into an attendance issue.
The students are, are planned to come in that day. We kind of sometimes run into that problem at the end of this full year, even when we don't have that.
And then we also have heat issues that I know we have air conditioners in a lot of rooms, they're in every rooms. And I just am anticipating not being well attended. And so there's a workaround.
And odds are it would probably be a half day.
Oh, it'll be early release, I know that. It just, but I think we can look at the, the feedback that we got last year is the number of of early release days that we do in that last week. Last year, we were looking at the heat, but in our buildings, we have an average of about five rooms that don't have, is at least a window air conditioner in them. So we're a little bit different than most districts.
Yes.
Um and we could move kids around that weren't in those types of classrooms. So last year, we did five
Yeah.
half day or early release days. Maybe we could look at adjustment, which would be helpful to families, I know, to, to have a few more full days.
I mean, I, I support, and I know we have to do what we have to do. I'm just saying, from what I'm hearing in the community attendance, so we might wanna, we have plenty of time to brainstorm.
To think about it and brainstorm. Yep, it's a great point.
And then my one question, and it, it may be on here, but I just didn't see it. Um your tech department will be available to families and also staff. So I, I know.
There's a section, I think, on the things that says when the tech department will be in for calls.
Yep, and they have the help desk information in there as well.
Tim's absolutely right. It's uh under Communications, Student and Family Support Number Three.
There we go. Oh, okay, it's at the bottom.
It's the timeframe, nine thirty to three thirty.
Perfect.
It's got their email, it's got their phone number, and a link as well um for, for support.
Des has been on fire giving me everything he's got. I figure if she's taking the time to do that for me, I better read it well.
Yeah, just one family still realized that too, so.
So any other question? I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that, that the way the staff has come together, the feedback from parents, I mean, three hundred and sixty responses. And that was only out like two days for that level of response. That was terrific. So thank you to all of our families for that. And we do take all that feedback to try to incorporate as much as possible. And there was great, some great ideas in there. So, and with that, that's the conclusion of the superintendent's report this evening.
Well, thank you so much. Um somebody like to move action four point zero one, accept financials?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is five zero zero. Action four point zero two, accept the donation?
Move it. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is five zero zero. Thank you to the Brookfield Renewable U.S. for that generous donation.
Yeah.
Uh action five point zero one, approve committee on special education?
Move it. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is five zero zero. Action five point zero two, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six instructional calendar?
Move it. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is five zero zero. Action five point zero through, three, to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five instructional calendar due to emergency closing dates?
Just to clarify, this is just adding that day at the end, right?
Twenty-four, yes, that's right.
Yeah, because I knew we did some stuff before, but I was wondering.
This was just reflecting what we actually are at now.
Okay, yeah.
Somebody want to move that?
Move it.
Tim?
Second?
Fallon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes five zero zero. For action six point zero one, to approve the policies?
Move it. Second?
Is there any discussion on any of those policies? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes five zero zero. Would somebody be interested in batching seven point zero one to seven point zero four, our personnel?
Move it. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes five zero zero. All right. Board forum. Lori, you want to start us off?
Okay, I want to say um I was very interested with the, the girls bowling team. I, I just, it just sounds like so much fun to me. I'm going to get over there and watch something. And I'd like to say um thank you to um the board, or I'm sorry, from the Brookfield Renewable for their donation. And what is Brookfield Renewable?
It is the um energy company here in town, they have, over by um Poshopper area, I believe. They're the water in there. I believe the money is going to help with the capstone project in the Erie Canal.
Yep. Great. All right, thank you.
Look at that. I get it. I like that. Anything else?
Um, no, thank you guys that showed up here today. And, and thank you, Kate.
Fallon?
Um ditto. And thank you for the presentations.
Uh Tim?
Uh same, I think, you know, presentations, a lot of clarifications on different things, and we took the time to ask questions. Uh I think it's important, I've been, you know, listening around, hearing things. We have so many kids doing amazing things in our district. And if you feel like, you know, there are so many things that we didn't catch something as a district, or maybe it didn't go out in a certain way, please reach out. You know, we want to celebrate your kids. That's why we're here. They're doing amazing things and, you know, whether or not where it shows up, don't let that define whether you're doing amazing things because we're watching in the community. We know what's going on. And I think, you know, Brian, just whoever our PR, whoever our person is, I don't even know if we can set up a system or something where, you know, every, you know, Friday or something, something's going out just with all the different things, maybe teamed up with Criselle's or something, just because, you know, I don't want to miss anything.
Yeah.
There's so much great stuff going on. I mean, we have, was it Cinderella coming up soon? That I just want to make sure, you know, we want to celebrate our kids. We want to celebrate when things go well, not just when things don't go well. So I think it's important that we make sure we reach out and we celebrate those successes.
Thank you. Yeah?
Uh yeah. Congratulations to the bowling team. It's always nice to hear when our students are succeeding at anything, whether it's sports or academically. Um Brian, I would like to find out what the commercial building code was back in nineteen eighty-four when junior high was. And I'd like to find out who the uh project manager was, if, if that's possible.
Oh yeah, we have all of that stuff.
Can go down and.
Oh yeah, we have a room. Yeah, we have a room down there.
I want to thank Kate and your team for all the work, the support into the budgets and uh and, and the insight that you provide to all of us because otherwise it's just a bunch of numbers to us.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Those invites should be in your email too, Nick.
Oh, I'm glad you said something. I'm gonna mention it too. Thank you.
All right, um ditto on what everybody said. Kate, really, you help us so much with understanding more. Uh like Nick said, it's just numbers to us otherwise.
Yeah.
Um so looking forward to what you have uh to share with us next week at the, the budget um meeting and to move forward from there. Um I, I know I did the shout out last time, but uh we had uh what my husband and I call snowmageddon. So your um custodial staff and everybody who's been helping keep uh open the buildings and the walkways and to those who have gone up on the roofs to shovel off the roofs and make sure that things are, are safe for our students and our staff. Um for coming in on those days where I hear, because I was not in town, that uh pretty much the whole city was closed down.
Yeah.
Um I, I really shout out to your staff that did come in and help keep things running and uh um it, we, we really couldn't be open without them. So, so please send that on to them. Um and with that, we're going to conclude our meeting. We do not.
I just have one more thing.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Paula, thank you. If, if you heard when I thanked Kate, I said, and her team, it was because at the moment, your name escaped. I was gonna say Paula, and I, Paula just didn't, blew it out of my head. So thank you, uh, you know, you're, you're here late like everybody else and I, and I know you put in the effort. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for that, Nick. Um there is no second uh public forum. There is no executive session. I know Fallon is very sad about that. Uh so, so with that, would somebody like to move nine point zero one? Fallon will. Our adjournment, anyone?
Second.
And Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes five zero zero. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Everybody have a great evening.